We have a quorum on the dais, and so I'm going to open this council meeting of April 9th, 2019, and call it to order. The first thing that we're going to be doing this evening is we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and Remy will lead us in that. Thank you, Remy. What we're going to do this evening, we know there's quite a number of you, I've got 11, that would like to address the council. We have public comments cards at the back, and if you'd like to give public comment, please fill one of these up, out, and give it to Melissa up front. And it's kind of a first come, first served. We're limiting our comments this evening to three minutes, as we always do, and if we're close to 10, 12, 13, 14, we may run over our 30, our 30 minutes, because we do want to hear your, your comments. But we are going to hold you to a strict three minutes. But first, what we're going to do is have our advice and information this evening, reports from our counselors, and let you know kind of what we're doing in the major areas of, of committee work. And so I'm going to start with Remy first, to share the committees that she on, and gives a report to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and to all the citizens that are here tonight. I could only wish that our council chambers were always this full. Thank you for the opportunity. So I'm going to start by reporting on our Housing for Homelessness Subcommittee. That meeting was held yesterday. We are a committee that works in smaller work groups focused on micropopulations within the homeless community. And so I'll give the reports on the progress of each of those subcommittees to start. And so one subgroup is focused on unaccompanied youth. We know that in Yamhill County, we have approximately 98 unaccompanied youth under the age of 18. In McMinnville, we're also very aware that we have over 230 children between kindergarten and eighth grade alone. And so the work of that subcommittee has been to bring a drop-in center to the city. That drop-in center is meant to work similarly to the drop-in center that's run in Newburgh by Youth Outreach, which is ultimately run through YCAP. And this is a forum in which children are having the ability to engage in after-school activities, and find shelter, and, and other activities after school. And so the main roadblock to bringing that drop-in center to the city of McMinnville has been finding a suitable location. Many locations have been scouted, however, there hasn't been one found at this time. When that drop-in center does come to the city, it will include services, including case management, mental health, helping children get GEDs, and job training. And again, that would be run through YCAP. Additionally, there's two other programs that are operated for children in the city of McMinnville. There's the Safe Families Program, which is run through Lutheran Family Services, and the Safe Shelter Program, which is run through YCAP. Those are similar programs in that they are focused on minors who do not currently have housing. The YCAP program is currently accepting applications for safe shelter homes. This is focused on children around the age of 11. It's a short-term stay with case management through YCAP. We currently have one home in the city of McMinnville that's providing that sort of shelter, and just a few more throughout the county. There's another work group that has been focused on vehicular homeless. That would mean those that are living in their cars, or RVs, or vehicles of other sorts. There's been an ordinance that was approved and passed by this council, Ordinance 5057, which both limits and expands safe overnight parking programs. We have case management through Champion Team, which is, Champion Team is here this evening. If you're interested in the Safe Overnight Parking Program, I believe both representatives and their executive director are here in the crowd and would be happy to talk to you. Currently, we have somewhere in the ballpark of six to 10 unofficial sites within the city where there are individuals that are living in their vehicles, however discreetly and legally, on private property. We also have one approved city site where we're waiting for a family match, and some other sites in development. A total of six other sites in development with our faith-based community and our government partners. And we have a waiting list. Champion Team currently has a waiting list as well, largely of families with children waiting to participate in the Safe Overnight Parking Program. Another subgroup is focused on domestic violence. As you may be aware, domestic violence is the second-leading cause of being homeless in the city of McMinnville. While we are the 10th-largest county, we have the second-largest population that is homeless because of domestic violence. So our work group has been focused on using county tax foreclosures to partner with Henderson House and provide interim housing. We have one domestic violence shelter in the city of McMinnville, which has three beds, which is clearly insufficient. So as that work group has been making forward progress, they ran into some roadblocks in terms of how those properties can legally transfer to a nonprofit such as Henderson House and go into service. Currently, both the county, this work group, and the cities of McMinnville and Newburgh are working together to look at how those properties can legally transfer, and not only go into service as domestic violence shelters in the short term, but then, after a certain amount of time, also return to the county tax role, and, again, be income-earning properties for the county. Additionally, we have a work group that's working with the Gospel Rescue Mission. The Gospel Rescue Mission is our only homeless shelter in the city of McMinnville. They are currently working to expand their work into more transitional housing, as they've had a lot of experience with individuals coming in, receiving job training, if applicable, the opportunity to get sober, or have the support they need in that way, and then have been unable to find additional housing. So the Gospel Rescue Mission has turned its eye towards acquiring more property, and to set up additional transitional housing. They are also working with the county. In addition, we heard a report on Housing Solutions, which is a new group that has been set up by Commissioner Kula. It is county-wide, and meeting regularly. At this phase, they're working to understand what's happening in the individual communities, as we understand that McMinnville is not unique in its experiences with homelessness at this time. West Valley is experiencing homelessness, Newburgh is experiencing homelessness in large numbers as well. And so that group currently is seeking some structure and some guidance, but they're trying to pull in all of the right partners to be able to take a more proactive approach, and stop some redundancy that's happening city to city, so that McMinnville's not trying to recreate what Newburgh is doing, and vice versa. We also had a conversation about trying to create some sort of lead for housing solutions, similar to what was created through the COG with Mid-Willemette Housing Solutions. And this would be a paid position, somebody that understood all of the resources that are available in our many communities, again, in the attempt to stop some redundancy that's happening. Additionally, YCAP is currently leading a group of shelter providers, also trying to understand better that redundancy that's happening, so we can more quickly get people into housing. I previously reported on a synergy summit that was held by the Housing Authority of Yamhill County, and we did have a report back from Henderson House, that one result of that synergy summit was that some of these smaller nonprofits that are also focused on housing have been available, or have been made aware of housing opportunities that they weren't currently aware of. Specifically, Henderson House was given 25 fast-track housing vouchers by the Housing Authority. And so therefore, we're able to move those victims of domestic violence from emergency housing to housing. So that's one committee that I'm reporting on. The other committee that I have to report on is the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. So we held our meeting on March 27th, pardon me. And our first order of business was to first review our action plan, and forgive me one There are some points that I wanted to not miss. So on that, thank you. So in the review of that action plan, of course, we noted some of the work that we had accomplished to date, which included memorializing system development, charged discounts for affordable housing projects, reviewing recently adopted inclusionary zoning laws, which, I'll have some more on that in a moment, offering an expedited permit process to builders who are offering affordable housing, researching and revising our cottage codes, and preparing language that's been adopted by this council to expand opportunities for affordable housing. We have some ongoing projects as well, including surveying the city for property opportunities, whether those are city-owned, county-owned, or nonprofit-owned. The work we're about to endeavor on includes evaluating the impact of a density bonus for developers. We've also done a buildable lands inventory, a housing needs assessment, and are beginning a housing needs strategy. Another one of our action items was to look at neighborhood stabilization, and we've correlated that with some of the work that's been done through moving code enforcement from the police department to the planning department, and helping to bring a number of properties up to code that currently, that formerly weren't. In addition, we have been meeting with the development community to evaluate a construction excise tax. These are methods of potentially creating more funding methods for housing in our city. We are evaluating the possibility of a floating zone, the end goal of which would be to be able to provide interim housing in an area that wouldn't normally be zoned for housing. So we have a work group working on that, and evaluating that, which will eventually come before the council. And then we're keeping our eyes on a number of things that are happening at the state level. Sal may be, most definitely would be able to speak better to these than I am, but as a small overview, we are watching House Bill 2997, which was really written by the McMinnville Planning Department, especially our planning director Heather Richards, and senior planner Tom Shower, and Sal Peralta. And Sal testified to that as-
I'll talk about it.
Oh, okay, wonderful. So there's more to come on that. We're also watching House Bill 2001, and our planning department has suggested amendments. This would help us to create equity and inclusion in our neighborhoods. We're following House Bill 2055, which is focused as a workforce housing accelerator program. And those monies would come via Oregon Housing and Community Services to assist local governments. We're also following House Bill 2056, which is a housing development grant program. We're engaged with Senate Bill 595, which on the Oregon website says it's still in committee, but I hear is really no longer-
I'll talk about that one as well.
Okay, wonderful, thanks, Sal. We're following Senate Bill 10, which relates to density requirements, and we're following House Bill 3349, which would redirect monies, it would do away with mortgage interest deductions on second homes, and make those funds available for, excuse me, affordable housing. That might be it for today.
Thank you, Remy. We've given Remy a little extra time to report because of the focus on homelessness and housing this evening. We thought that that would be a great update for those that are in the audience. So we'll move down to Zach. Do you have any reporting on committee assignments?
Nothing of note from Historic Landmarks, or McMinnville Community Media, and the only thing to note on Landscape Review is Arbor Day is this Saturday, at the McMinnville High School will be celebrating with trees and plantings. At McMinnville High School, Saturday, April 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Thank you, Zach. Wendy?
The McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee canceled its meeting this month because we are working, continuing work on the Third Street Improvement Project. We had our second meeting, and we focused on high-level goals. We had a good group that came out, and we did some good brainstorming, and they're gonna be, they're gonna go back and put it together for us, and we'll probably have some high-level goals for that project at our next meeting.
Thank you, Wendy. Adam?
We have a YCAP meeting on Thursday. Looks like House Bill 2449, which is a 911 tax bill, is still alive. Just gonna go from 75 cents to $1.50 on your phone bills per line. And Airport Commission, we haven't met, still refurbin' that fuel tank out there for the no-lead. And we have our First Kids on the Block Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow at 3:30. With Zach.
Thank you, Adam. Sal?
My two committees are the Parkway Committee, which didn't meet, and Mid Valley Council of Governments, which also didn't meet. However, I have been working, as Remy mentioned, on some legislation for the city, and it's germane to today's meeting, so I just thought I'd mention it. The first bill that I've been working on is House Bill 2997, which is a bill that we had intended to make changes to the state's inclusionary zoning law, that we're intended to make it more usable for smaller communities. This is intended to bring more affordable housing projects into cities like ours. The legislation is moving forward. It's not going to be a statewide ordinance, but they will be moving forward with McMinnville as a pilot case for it. It passed out of committee yesterday on a seven-to-one vote, and we're expecting it to pass in the House before moving on to the Senate. Feel good about that bill. And thank you to Heather and her staff, Tom, and others for their work on that. Second bill is Senate Bill 595. I just want to correct some of the comments that have been made in previous meetings. That bill is moving forward. It's, it's met the legislative deadlines to move out of the Senate Housing Committee and into the Senate Finance Committee. This is a bill that would allow local governments to reallocate a portion of our transient lodging tax to address the housing affordability and homelessness crisis. It's not a tax increase, it's just a reallocation. The Affordable Housing Subcommittee voted to support that bill, and had suggested that the full council take action on it. I think because of some bad reporting about the bill. That didn't happen at either of the last two meetings, and so I would like for that to be considered this evening. I've, I've made that request of staff as well. I think it's important that our city weigh in on that, and I, and so that I can do the work that I need to try and keep that moving forward. Second, third point I wanted to just raise for this evening, as some of the staff knows, because of my role on the COG, I've been contacting other jurisdictions to see how they're working in their communities to address homelessness, particularly with regard to the enforcement side of it, in light of the Ninth Circuit decision. In making those calls, you know, it's, it's just worth mentioning, we're not alone in what's happening. In 2018, Oregon had the second-largest population of unsheltered homelessness in the country. Rural Oregon, at that time, had the second-largest homeless population of any rural region in the country. And that problem grew in 2000, it's grown in the last year. We were the second, two years ago, we were the fourth-fastest-growing homeless state in the country. Last year, we were the second-fastest, or two, three years ago, the fourth-fastest, two years ago, the second-fastest, this year, the fastest. We're dealing with a crisis. It's affecting the entire state. It's very frustrating for all of us. Anyway, that said, I had a productive conversation with the mayor of Corvallis, and he pointed out that their city code mayor differentiates between sleeping and camping, and they place time restrictions, time and place restrictions, on, on camping. And I've asked our staff to look into that as a possibility for strengthening our enforcement against long-term camping, particularly in the city core. And I guess I was hoping to get a bit of an update from staff about how those conversations have gone tonight.
Mayor, council, members of the public, I can briefly report. Police Chief Scales is actually out of town at a conference, but he met with the Corvallis chief today, got some feedback from them on how that ordinance has been working in their community. Legal council's also in the process of reviewing the information we've gathered from Corvallis. We'll have more soon.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Kelly?
Well, I've been vacationing, but I'm on the Housing Committee with Remy, but I'm, in addition, I'm also on the Visit McMinnville Committee, and we are meeting for our strategic plan that's been postponed a couple of times tomorrow. And in addition to that, I'll probably be going and listening at the State Legislature as we testify, or the mayor and others testify for the Parkway Committee, which I'm very enthusiastic about. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Kelly. And just again, tomorrow, we're going to be spending, the Parkway Committee will be spending the day in Salem, visiting senators and House of Representative members, and then at 5:00, we will be joining the Joint Committee on Transportation and testifying as a Parkway Committee. And again, our intent is to seek more funding to what we call Phase to the Finish, the Parkway. And we'd had an opportunity to go back to Washington DC and doing some legislative work with our, our senators and representatives back in Washington DC, and also meeting with the federal highway and transportation committees back there. So those are, those are the things I've been involved in. Remy talked about the, the county housing solution meeting, and so that takes care of our reports this evening. Again, it's out of order, but we thought that it would be appropriate just to share with you some of the areas that we're focusing on. With that being said, we're going to move right now, we have one proclamation tonight, and I'd like to, to address the proclamation. And so I'm going to read this proclamation, and then we'll have the opportunity to have Russell come up, and I'll present it to him. But our proclamation is, "Whereas children abuse is considered to be one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children, and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas it is estimated that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18, and annually over 80,000 Oregon children, Oregonian children, are reported to the House, the Department of Human Services, as having been abused or neglected, with over 10,000 child abuse victims confirmed in 2018 alone. And whereas a physical, emotional, financial impact of abuse and neglect falls mostly heavily on children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, social backgrounds, and these crimes affect many more family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas a trauma-informed response to victims promote healing and foster strength in their survivors, whereas children victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victimization, seeking services and find healing and participating in the justice process. And whereas providing victims and their families with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeeded because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas McMinnville is dedicated to strengthening child abuse as survivors and their non-offending families in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our community, and working to prevent abuse and neglect. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. In witness thereof, I have therefore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this, the ninth day of April 2019. We affirm McMinnville's commitment to creating a safer, healthier, more thriving community for our children, and taking steps to help prevent child abuse through awareness efforts, prevention, promotion, and training. Further, we call upon all citizens to invest in the lives of our children, to be aware of their safety, well-being, and celebrate those who provide prevention programs and support to child victims of violence, sexual abuse, and neglect, and many other life-altering crimes, and their commitment to ensuring that all children are afforded their rights to be safe from harm. As well, we promote the psychological, physical, emotional, healing, and ongoing development of these most precious resources, our children. Further, we ask and encourage all citizens to wear blue tomorrow, April 10th, 2019, as a public statement of support of child abuse prevention. Signs Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville." Russell? One of the most pleasurable things I have, the opportunity of doing, is proclamations, and this is, this was a really good organization and good recognition. So, Russell, thank you. This now takes us to our part in the program this evening, comments from citizens. And any member of the audience is invited to provide comments. Anyone may speak on any topic of-
Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter that is in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We limit our comments to three minutes, and I'll raise my hand, and I could, especially tonight, interrupt you because we're going to hold to the three-minute. It is a dialogue of you sharing with the council, so we will not get into a dialogue back and forth, but sharing your comments. We know there have been many comments that have been given to us electronically that will be a part of the record this evening as they've come in. And so I'm going to go ahead and, if you have a desire to speak, fill one of these out and give it up to Melissa, but I'll go ahead and start with, it looks like Michael Yates?
Michael Yates. Michael Yates.
Go ahead, Michael, come in. We have all your information, so you don't have to identify your address in that.
Good evening, council. There's an important-
Pull the mic a little closer to you, Michael, so everyone can hear.
There's an important issue that I'd like to bring up, because I've lived here for several years, and I've been trying to be a decent member of the community, but I am in transition. And because of some things that they're involved with being on the streets, I'm not allowed to stay at the homeless shelter or anything, and I've been incarcerated because of desperation, but I was not allowed to receive the medical treatment that I needed, and I was kicked out of jail. And there was times I went to jail, just tried to get a safe place to stay out of the weather, but I was denied that. And then they want me to go to jail when everything's come better, but, I mean, there's a real issue that's going on. Like, the IRS is saying that my tax returns are supposed to be at the mission, and it's supposed to have been there for a while, and I got arrested several weeks ago for protesting, you know? And it's ruining my name. It's, I'm trying to move forward with my life, but, I mean, I don't know who to believe, on the IRS or the mission, but, I mean, for me to be going to jail and facing charges over this, it deeply concerns me, you know? And I have nothing against the people at the mission, I just need, it's important, because, like, if I were to move back out east, I could have a place to live, but I needed the funds and everything. I was not given no choice about it. When I did the W-2s, it was the address, and they gave me no choice. I just wish that, I can't become a statistic for the system, you know? I've invested too much time, I've roughed up, and everything, and it's, I don't know. People already know what's going on, and I just want to share my part of the story. I don't want to make anybody look bad over this situation, but it's really stressing me out, it's killing my family. My family's involved in politics, and my dad's a retired law enforcement officer on the East Coast, and it's killing him to hear about things like this. His health isn't good, and every time I get the chance to move out there-
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you sharing that with us. Robert Wood? Robert Wood? Jacob Miller?
Good evening. Oh, I just came down to-
Bring the mic closer.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Could you guys hear me now? I just came down, I'd like to, well, thank you guys for some of the work that you have been doing on stuff. I didn't hear anything up until now about some of the stuff that you guys have been doing, so that's good to hear. And really, just to address some of the, well, I'll just get to the point. I'd like to point out that discrimination based on economic status is no better than discrimination based on race, age, sex, religion, or belief. And I urge you guys, I really do urge you guys to count the costs of further ordinances designed to be arbitrarily enforced and applied discriminately towards the most vulnerable of people, those deemed undesirable in a lot of the cases. I think that, really, if as much effort is put into, like, the situation of trash, if people even put forth the effort that my family's put forth to try to get cleaned up within the community, it wouldn't be there. It just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be there. There's people that are there that are capable, and they're trying, but there's people that aren't. And I think there's other capable members of this community that might be able to help out on that as well. We can't actually have a dumpster put down there on our call. It's your guys' call. You guys have to okay it, you have to permit it. We had one down there that was sanctioned, was filled in 24 hours, all the way to the top. I mean, there are people that will come out and help, but we could really use more of the help. Moving forward with that, I think we should, that it clearly, these ordinances that are designed to oppress more than actually alleviate the issue, if the issue is sanitation, like calling an emergency due to sanitation issues, due to health issues, but then not providing the things for sanitation, like trashcans and toilets, it's not a viable approach. And I really, I do, I think it cuts down at an amissable relationship between the groups that are affected by this. I know that it looks bad, and I know that it's getting big, and it's concerning us. We can't, we've been trying to hold the line, but our little trailer just doesn't hold all the trash. Stuff like that is really simple, it seems like a really big thing, but really, less hate and scared tactic and more love and charity, just what could one do? Not necessarily give people stuff, maybe even just coming down and at the back of a truck, you know, on a scheduled day. Some people might be able to help, some people might not, just more of that, more of that love is what I'm getting at, you know, what I'm kind of, I think that that would really go a lot farther than hate. And I urge you again to count the cost. Remember that there already was an emergency declared, you know, there's already stuff passed. We've already seen the manipulation of rules along the way, and even hearing of more manipulation of the rules to keep people moving along, but not anything to solve the problems, problems like sanitation, problems like, you know, the health, the smell, things that are bothering people, things that they're otherwise would rather not look at. Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob. Howie Harkema? How are you, Howie?
Very good.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors, for all you do. Thank you, staff. I've been involved in this homeless issue now for 12 years. About five and a half years ago, Mark Davis and I came and gave comments on the homeless influx and the homeless crisis that was coming to McMinnville and throughout Yamhill County. Our testimonies were given to both this council and the Board of Commissioners at the time. The crisis has arrived, and it's here right now, right in front of us. In 2008, during the annual homeless count, we found 364 homeless people living in Yamhill County. In 2018, 1,386 were counted in the Yamhill County homeless count, with the largest homeless population living in McMinnville. I certainly can understand the resistance and problems that we're having on the streets with our visibly homeless population camping downtown on the streets of McMinnville, and I can and do sympathize and empathize with this community and our businesses. The amount of trash, garbage, and physical residue piling up every day, the not having restrooms available for those that need them, forces our homeless to utilize alleyways, parking lots, behind buildings, to relieve themselves of their bodily functions, which we all must do, because they have no alternative. This in turn affects the businesses, our tourism, and our community at large. But these people living on these public spaces have no local homeless camp available to them, nor do they have, beyond the mission, a shelter available where they feel comfortable, except in the fall and the winter, when they open the emergency winter shelter. These human beings live a lifestyle different from us, they cannot afford to be anywhere else. These few visible homeless, 70 or less, are survivalists. They are the ones that we see on the streets, not the invisible homeless. Some of them have mental health issues, drug and alcohol addiction issues, and other personal broad-brush problems that keep them where they are without social intervention. I for one believe that we must continue to seek answers and probably some very uncomfortable solutions. This problem here, right in front of us, is not going to go away anytime soon. Every state, county, and city in the US is dealing with this complicated issue. However, there are solutions, as we have looked at Eugene Springfield and what they do down there, but we also need to look at Salt Lake City, New Jersey, and others across the nation that have at least found some important solutions, like Housing First, rapid rehousing.
Howie, we've hit our three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you for your testimony, and all the good work you're doing.
Thank you all.
Valerie Miller?
Hey.
Good to see you.
It's good to see you guys. First of all, I want to congratulate all of you on the work that you have been doing.
Bring that mic a little closer, everybody wants to hear.
I want to congratulate you guys on the work you've been doing. I'm really impressed with all of what I've heard so far with the housing solutions that you're trying to come up with. That's amazing. I think that the biggest thing that I see in the community that we need is, like my husband said, we've been trying to take care of this garbage problem ourselves, with my family, and it's super hard, because I have a minivan and a little tiny trailer, and we pay full price, probably more than anybody that has a home that pays for their garbage. We pay way more than they're paying, and it comes out of my pocket, which I'm fine with that. But I do, we do need help, because it's hard for us to hold the burden on ourselves. Basically, we are trying to do our best to give people a safe place to come and talk if they need to, because we are a little bit of a different type of homeless person, I guess. I don't consider myself homeless. You guys know that, you know? I feel like my house, my home, is my RV, and I don't think that I'm homeless. But I think that we, as a community, need to be more open in talking to each other and being, having open dialogue, so we can all conversate and stop, like, pointing fingers, taking pictures, using social media as a platform for hate. I've been guilty of it, too, you know? Said some nasty things I probably shouldn't have said. But basically, we really need to come together as a community and find a grassroots type of solution. And I think that we can. I think all of you guys are super smart, and I'm really happy to hear, I'm bubbling up with joy to hear that you guys are really working hard on trying to find ways to fix this. That's really good, but we have to remember that some of these people out here, they're, they need outreach. We need somebody that can go out there and talk to them and ask them what they need. It's nice to have, like, a place that they can go get help, but sometimes it's nice to have somebody come to them and be like, "Hey, guys, how you doing this afternoon? What can we do for you? How can we help you? How can we get you out of this situation?" That's the only way we're going to be able to do this, is by having relationships with them, with us, like I want to have with you guys. So I think that if we work together with love and compassion, I think the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, the reason they made that ruling is so that we could find, can I just say this last part? We can find humanitarian ways to fix the problem and not criminalize. I think that's what they wanted us to do, and I think we can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Keith Page? Hold that mic right up to you. There you go.
So, some numbers, some statistics. For every dollar that we spend on drug and alcohol treatment, we save $7 on the back end. By the back end, I mean police, fire, emergency room. I have a video I made at the library a couple weeks ago. One guy drunk on his butt, two police officers in two separate cars, a fire engine, an ambulance, four paramedics, they took the guy on a stretcher to the hospital, not to the Gospel Mission, I checked. How many tens of thousands of dollars did that cost this community? It's outrageous. I'm from San Diego, I'm not a native Oregonian, but I live here, I love it here, I'm going to stay here the rest of my life. San Diego has the fourth-largest homeless population in the country, I think it's about 10,000 now. There was a hepatitis A outbreak in 2017, 15 homeless people died, and they had to come up with a solution. And basically, what they did is what Howie's been talking about for a long time. Apparently, no one wants to listen. I don't understand, I'm pretty frustrated. I'm not homeless anymore. I got a place through YCAP, I'm waiting for it to get fixed up so I can move in, and I can't wait. It's brutal out here. If you're a woman and you're homeless, it's tough. They get raped, they get beaten, they get their stuff stolen, all the time. And there was an incident at Fourth and Adams Thursday morning that I have on video, and that video is going to go to the ACLU, and it's going to go to CoinTV. If you want to know how to deal with what's going on, look at CoinTV's five-part series called "The Unsheltered Truth." The final installment is called "The San Diego Solution." They're doing tremendous stuff down there. The Lucky Duck Foundation, which is in San Diego, but it was, the people who started it are from Oregon. His name is Pat Kilkinian. It can be done, we can do this. Why not McMinnville? Why do we not deal with this problem? I'm just saying, we need to get talking about this and get busy. This rogue security guard with a gun who's going around rousting homeless people without any provocation and without any authority, he booted a friend of mine from behind Geraldi's the other night, who has permission from the owner of Geraldi's to sleep there. This guy forced him to leave. Where is he supposed to go? What's he supposed to do? This guy has a gun, and he obviously doesn't care for the homeless. I'm sorry, I get a little worked up about this, I'm pretty passionate about this. We can do better, and I hope we will. I hope some people look into the Lucky Duck Foundation, the Alpha Project of San Diego, Square One in Eugene, I believe it is. There are cities, like Howie said, there are cities, there are communities that are doing stuff. This homelessness is a symptom. It's a symptom of drug addiction and alcoholism and mental health issues that have just been ignored for decades.
Thank you, Keith. Is it Greg Baugh? Greg, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, council, for all your work, and-
Bring that mic close to you, Greg.
Everybody else is doing all this good work, and for an opportunity to come in and express some concerns. I recently went into planning to get a Lux Form done for my business. I've done this five or six or seven times in the last four years, and found that there was a new payment schedule for fees in there. At first, it was fine with me, then I know it takes money to run things and do this business in town. And then I was really surprised at the change from $0 to $1,875. It's quite a considerable difference for what I'm used to. And then I became actually furious and very upset to find out that $1,875 only applied to my business- and seventy-five dollars only applied to my business, which is a cannabis business in town. After doing a little bit of research, I found out that these decisions were made by the council. I think this is true. This is just kind of how I've gathered information, and it was from data gathered from the Planning Commission or Department on how much time it takes to process some of these things. I would like to express a lot of concern with the way this data was read. Data can be read in so many different ways, it's incredible. Depends on your mood and who you are and what you're thinking that day. I can understand that some of these things took a lot of time in the very beginning, and there was a lot of learning. And now it sounds like some of that learning and time has been turned towards repayment by those of us that need to continue getting these forms. These forms are required every year, and every time I have to get a license, I need to come in and get this form. Once it's done one time, how could eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars of money be charged for a service of a signature and a redo of a Lux form? And even if it was not the first time, I'd like to see the data and show how a new one, not an old one in the mess of learning, but a new one could possibly take two thousand dollars of the city planning's time to get a signature saying that this is an appropriate use of a zoned area in McMinnville. It doesn't seem, it's discrimination, it's unfair. I could understand interpretation of data taking people there, but a second look would be very appreciated. In this business, this eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars can't be written off. The federal government looks at this as income for me. It's not a business expense. At the end of the year, I have to pay thirty-eight percent more than that on this brand-new two thousand dollar fee for a signature on a form. It just seems atrocious. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Greg. John Aston? Aston? Ashton? I'll get it. Welcome John.
All right, thank you Mayor, councilors. I'd like to address the homeless issue. I'm a business owner. I employ six people over on Miller Street. One of them who was homeless, living in their car when I decided to employ them. They now have a place to stay. It's, it's just, the people in my area, I live on Riverside Drive as well, and we drive by there every day, and we really feel for the homeless people. Our heart goes out to them, but they're really destroying that area, and I know they have nowhere to go. And it's really, there's some hard things that need to be said, and some hard things that need to be done. You know, we can all sit around and talk about it, but like Valerie said, I think, you know, going down there and having conversations with them, which I've done. I've gone down there, helped people fix cars, took them gas, gave them rides, and it's a real tough situation. You know, we, we went from, I think I heard some numbers today from like three hundred to thirteen hundred homeless people in Yamhill County. Where are these people coming from? Affordable housing, you know, we're, we're looking at small houses, letting people park in other people's property with their RVs and cars. The prices in McMinnville are very expensive. You know, they could go to Salem and get housing cheaper, or Sheridan, or some of the other surrounding communities, but McMinnville is a, you know, best city downtown and, and, you know, a few years ago in Parade Magazine, it's going to be a higher cost of living here. So we're looking at making housing in McMinnville where it costs so much more than some of the outlying communities. Some of the people that are there don't want this housing. They just want a place to park their vehicles, and somehow they all ended up over on Marsh Lane and Dustin Court. And giving them a dumpster that fills up in twenty-four hours, I mean, it's going to keep it a little bit cleaner, like Jacob was talking about, but in the long run, we need to look at a way to clear those streets off. If there is no housing available, we need to find a place for them to park. I've been to a planning commission meeting where we talked about this a few weeks ago. To have somewhere for them to park their vehicles all in one area like that. I drive by there several times a day. The police are there quite often. Lot of drug use going on, domestic violence, crime, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that want to help, but what, what can we do as a community for these people? We don't want to just scatter them and turn them away, but what we need to do is make it less comfortable for them to, thanks, to want to come here. So, thank you.
Thank you John. Stacy. Stacy Mayhem? Okay. That's a W, not an N, so.
Correct. No mayhem here.
Welcome Stacy.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Stacy Mayhew. I'm fifty years old. I've been in Yamhill County for about twenty-five years. I raised my family here and have been involved in a myriad of different community services. I think when you fall in a certain side of this issue, you're looked at as not being compassionate, which is absolutely untrue. As a matter of fact, I think the reason that we're having this problem is because we live in a community that is totally compassionate, benevolent, generous, giving people, giving businesses, and I think that's part of the reason that we have this problem. I've, I've raised, I was raised, you know, I would go down to Burnside with my mom, and I can remember as a five-year-old seeing at the Union Gospel Mission and, and serving, and that's the way I was raised, and that's the way I raised my children. We volunteered for many years in Meals on Wheels. I know Howie personally because my sons and I served at the Soup Kitchen. I've taken pizzas, clothing, blankets, information to the homeless when they will listen to me, which is not very often. You have to want to be helped, and many of them do not want to be helped. I'd like to actually just read the city council's mission statement. "A collaborative and caring city inspiring an exceptional quality of life." That's a quality of life for me as a taxpayer, but it should also be a quality of life for the homeless, and I, I don't think that they have a good quality of life. It is not a good quality of life to live in filth and human waste, parasites, and infectious disease. And so, under the guise of compassion, we're really just exacerbating that situation and not helping them at all. The city of McMinnville delivers high-quality services in collaboration with partners for a prosperous, safe, and livable community. I'd like to know how you think that we feel safe walking past the situation on Fourth Street or going to pay our bill at Mack Water and Light? I know people that won't even go there because it's like a third-world country. It's not safe. And, and so, I'd, I'd like to know how you're doing that. You talk about stewardship and equity, courage, and accountability to the citizens that elected you to these spaces that you hold. I do believe that you are trying to do what you were elected to do, but I, I don't believe that it's working, and I think that's obvious by what we are seeing, and that's obvious by why all the citizens are here tonight, most of who are, like myself, compassionate people who, who care about their city and love their city, and they pay their taxes, and they would like to find a solution to the problem. There are solutions to this problem, and like Howie said, Salt Lake City is doing some great work. Houston is doing some great work in the homeless community, also San Antonio. I brought you all a little copy of your mission statement, and in there, I've put some reading for you on the programs that actually are helping to end homelessness, veterans specifically. Thank you.
Thank you Stacy. Eric Wolf. Welcome Eric.
So I'm also a citizen of McMinnville. I was born here, went to school here, raised a family here, work here, and participated in our community level, supporting all different individuals with different needs. And some of the things that I want to talk about specifically are, you know, there is no, we're not discriminating against people because they're homeless or otherwise, but one thing that needs to be touched upon and reiterated that was just mentioned was safety, and that's public safety for all people, whether you're homeless or have a home. And with the conditions as they are, those individuals are not in safe places, nor is the community necessarily safe as well based on the conditions that we're currently dealing with. And with the fact that this situation is perpetuating itself and is obviously getting worse, by not changing this condition, the essence is the city and its people are accepting this condition, and at some point in time, there's going to be a catastrophic event, whether somebody gets hit by a car, there's a crime committed against someone that results in a serious injury or even death. And what's going to happen to the city as far as its accountability to tolerate this and not change this condition? And when we worry about whether we're going to have insurance or not, that's something I think we need to consider as well, that we're promoting by continuing to see this issue grow. It's, it's a hardship for people in this community that are living in that situation. It's also a hardship for businesses, both in the public sector and private sector. Property values are affected, tourism is affected. Individuals that are taking steps to clean their property, protect their property, and preserve their property, and work on providing a safe space for, for themselves to the best of their ability, and the community that comes onto their property is also a cost that we're dealing with. The last point I'll make is, we're looking for equity, and equity for all, for people that are homeless, but also people that are taxpayers, and we are continuously paying more for fees that's been mentioned, and with some, with, I would say, some nonsensical reason that we're paying these exorbitant fees that was mentioned earlier today, and you're talking in this, in the same note of saying how we would like to create affordable housing. Well, building housing takes a lot of work, takes labor, it takes materials, but some of the other costs associated with it are, are all the fees to start your project, the development fees, the school excise tax, and we're talking now about a construction tax as well. So, when we look at equity, let's make sure it's delivered consistently throughout the board, and realize when you don't provide consistency at all levels, you're also inviting more inconsistency and willingness to adhere to these new rules and regulations that are coming up, as well as the ones that exist now.
Thank you Eric. Welcome Joya.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Joya Goodrum, President and CEO for the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today to express concern regarding the growing homeless and transient issue in our community, especially in the industrial park. I've spoken with several businesses that are being impacted by the encampment at Dustin Court and Marsh Lane. You are also in receipt of a letter and photos from First Federal expressing their concern about the transients camping on Fourth. Businesses have experienced unlawful trespassing, theft, and damage to their property. Owners have installed fencing and cameras at significant cost to thwart further theft and unlawful trespass. Drivers on Marsh Lane have been threatened, spit upon, and cursed at while trying to get to Mack Water and Light to pay their bill. The cab company will no longer pick up riders in the area for fear of being robbed or assaulted due to an incident on March twenty-third. There are pictures on Facebook of trash piling up on Dustin Court. Fourth Street is also strewn with tents, trash, and detritus, effectively blocking the sidewalk behind First Federal. If any business or resident began dumping trash on city property, what would be the outcome of that? Do the residents and businesses of this community have the right to dump trash on their own property? Does one have the right to dump trash on another's private property? Not according to City Code Section 8.16.180 Junk, or Section 8.20020 Declaration of Public Nuisance. Therefore, why is the behavior of a group of individuals in our community violating City Code acceptable? We have standards of behavior that we are all expected to follow, so please explain why those camping on our streets and sidewalks are not held to that same standard of behavior. The Ninth Circuit Court issued an opinion regarding the rights of homeless individuals. My interpretation of that case is that a city cannot criminalize an individual for sleeping or resting on public property. I did not read in the ruling that littering and defacing public areas is included in the constitutional right to sleep. As representatives of the citizenry of McMinnville, I ask you, is this the town you want to be in? I was on a committee with the city staff, businesses, and residents to craft the Mack Town 2032 Plan. Homelessness, transience, and drug addiction are our community's biggest issue and should be the city's top priority. We are sensitive to the plight of the homeless in our community, and we want to ensure that the businesses in our community can manage their enterprises and keep our economy strong. We expect our city to enforce the established codes and regulations and apply those rules to all of its citizens. Some businesses feel they have been treated unfairly by the city. Rules should be applied across the board. Your local businesses should not be punished. They are law-abiding citizens and keeping our economy strong. Don't punish them while turning a blind eye to this growing crisis in our community. We'd like to know what the city is going, is doing or planning to do to alleviate the concerns the businesses have regarding the trash, the health, and safety issues. Our businesses have made significant investments in McMinnville. There's a lot of talk about the rights of homeless. What about the rights of the residents, the business owners, and the taxpaying citizens of this community?
Thank you Joya. Scott?
Over here, I'm here.
Yep, I know you're up front.
I made two videos, one of Marsh and one of Dustin, and they're a total of three minutes, two seconds, because I knew you would keep me there. So, let me, okay, so I thought I would just play and talk at the same time, because last time I was here, I issued the Dustin Court Challenge, which I, hopefully, you all went down. I asked you not to get out of your car, but just see what I'm looking at. And today, I'm here, I'm not, all the RVs, I'm saying they're not even homeless. What I'm talking about is the boulevards. I'm talking about, it's too bad it's not dark, you can't see, but it's interesting, these coming up, there's like subfloors. These people have been here for months. Did you see that one? Months and months. There is no reason, they are not expecting to move. This is their home, okay? This is what I would like to see. I'm not even, like I said, talking about RVs. Let me just get to my notes here, said, if you want to sleep in a home, if you don't want to sleep in a homeless shelter, and you want a place to squat, you can, that's what I was, I've always said, if you want to squat, if you want to be homeless, you can be, but the place to do it is not on our boulevards. It's amazing that this is YCAP's boulevard? That's private property, and we are allowing people to squat on the sidewalk, on Fourth Street, squatting on the boulevards. He's on the other side, we built a fence. That is private property boulevard, okay? And it's amazing to me, okay, the RVs, the RVs are sitting on the street, but it's the, the sprawl of the RVs and the people that are living on the boulevards. Why we're allowing that blows my mind. So, what I'm saying is that we have to, let me just go right to number one. There we go. The city needs to acknowledge that people are going to squat in McMinnville, and right now, because you're so afraid of the Ninth District interpretation, that you're just gun-shy of doing anything. Well, with you doing nothing, you are sending out the signal that the police department hands off. McMinnville is welcome. Oh, look at this one. This is right across the front door of McMinnville, coming up, bam! Really? Okay, so, we need a place, and I'm not saying we need to build a, a, a large facility, but we need a place to say, if you want to squat, it should not be in our industrial park. It should be out on the edges of the city. If you want to squat, we will give you a place to squat, maybe bring the bus out, but we need to have a place that people can do- we need to have a place that people can do it. Right now, the city has no place, and since we have no place, that's why you're gun-shy of the Ninth District. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. David Antindica?
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. I'm aware this is a very complex problem, sure a lot of people are working on this, and as a citizen, I actually have not much to ask, but to know that the problem is being addressed the way that I think most citizens want to see it addressed. I see there are different groups. Homeless is not a category, really. It's probably somebody has drug problems, mental problems, abuse in the family or family problems, and then there's other people who just like to live that way. And I think, as much as I'd like to help the ones that have objective problems, so somebody who has a drug problem or such, I don't think we should enable the people who don't have that sort of problem and just choose to live that way with, with our money. I know it's a hard thing to say, but I think we're all here because there is a problem. I'm, I'm sure everybody would have one more thing to add to that, but as a citizen, I'd be happy to help the people who need it, need a help, a hand up, but I don't think we should pay for a handout. I'm sorry, a little bit worked up about this. Is the city gonna, does the police department, do the people who reach out to these, these people have an idea of where they're at? And if I want to help somebody through the city, through outreach, through money, do I know that it's going to the right people, or am I being taken advantage of? And I think that's something that everybody would like to know, because I don't think anybody is not compassionate, but I don't want to enable, and I don't want other cities to think McMinnville's a place to send their people. I'm amazed that so many more homeless people are around, since the economy is doing pretty well. I would expect that in 2009, there'd be more than there are today, so something's not working, but I'd like to see that the right problems are addressed. I don't know if the city has this information, or if the police can kind of put people in different groups, and I, I'm glad, I think most people would be glad to help the people who need it. I think I wouldn't be happy to just give a solution to anybody just because they're homeless, because I want to know why they're homeless, and if me helping them is going to help them, or just make them, what's the word, enable them there. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And our last public comment, Kate Miller.
Thank you to allow me to talk today. I would like to discuss about the unfortunate human being that who have no house to leave. I have a three-times experience with them. Once, they damaged my gazebo where it's my food truck park, then I called the cops. I understand, they said, no, no any camera, any witness, that I can ask them to help to catch that guy. And then the second one is get escalated, because we, me and my daughter were sitting outside a gazebo, outside a food truck, and they have a homeless guy walk past us, and out of the brew, he ran back and he about to punch me. And my daughter's only nine years old, and she's so scared. And then I yelled, he ran back towards the truck again. I put my kit in the truck, and then tried to grab everything on the table outside. He ran to me again, and I ran back to my truck and I called the cops. No, I called the dispatcher. The dispatcher asked me, does that man have a weapons? I said, no, but he have, about to punch me with his fist. The dispatcher said, nothing we can do. I done nothing to them. I was sitting and chatting with my girl, and when I asked for protection, that's all I got. And they kept coming harassing me, talked to me really rude words. When they approached and want some free meal, and I said, sir, I cannot give it to you. Suddenly, the, the voice changed. I know you're going to say that and be words, just go back to your country. I tried to do, I tried to work for a living, to pay tax, to be a good citizen. But I got harassed so many times, and I felt unsafe. Anytime, I didn't mean that all the homeless are bad, but anytime when I see some of them come close to my food truck, I looking for the knife to protect myself. I would like to ask for favor, if you can do anything. As I'm a citizen, as I'm a local, people who live in McMinnville, at least make me feel safe in this town. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kate.
We owe her apology to this community. It's just that from up here, it feels like she's alienating, and that's what I'm talking about, and that's what this community feels like. You guys better get something done, because it's going to get worse, and the price momentarily of what you're doing to this community is going to be drained.
Thank, it's. We thank you for your comments tonight. We've listened, and feel free to reach out to, to staff or members of the council, and we are, we're working on a very difficult situation. So again, thank you for coming tonight and the, the ability to share your story, whatever side that might be on, and the listening, and I can tell you right now, from a council perspective, we're listening. So thank you.
Let's make sure we do something. Stop listening, stop talking.
So we are, we're going to proceed with the rest of our council meeting this evening, and you're free to stay and be a part of that. Again, yes?
The landlord of the Ice Building in Porter, he's a friend of the landlord that I parked my truck. He told my landlord that they have a sign at his building that says, if anyone wants a baby, come to McMinnville.
Come and get a card, Kate. Come and get my card and give me a call. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. That's how to get a, oh, no, 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 no. Absolutely.